Thank you all so much for being here with us today for the October Promising Practices webinar, Creative Designs for Democratic Participation Legislative Theater and City Council Meetings. My name is Rebecca Tav, and I direct the National Civic League's All America City Award Program in DC Office. Just a little bit of background for those of you less familiar with the National Civic League. We are a national nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. We aim to advance civic engagement to create equitable and thriving communities. We were founded all the way back in 1894 by a group of reformists led by Teddy Roosevelt and Louis Brandeis. And that makes us the oldest good governance organization in the country. We've championed many of the democratic innovations of the early 20th century. Today, the League maintains the Model City Charter, publishes the National Civic Review, of course runs the All America City Award, and really serves as a convenor and a support for a large network of local elected, appointed, and other civic leaders. Our new Center for Democracy Innovation also works with public officials across the country to really understand, test, and ultimately disseminate some civic innovations that we hope have the potential to make democracy more participatory, equitable, and ultimately productive. And we think one of such innovations is the subject of today's webinar. But before we get into that, I just want to do a quick plug for my program, the All America City Award. It is the flagship program of the National Civic League. It began in 1949 with the aim of recognizing exceptional civic engagement and communities. This past summer, we recognized the 2024 recipients. And last month, we launched our application for 2025, which will have a theme of strengthening environmental sustainability. So here on your screen, you can see a couple of projects that would make for a good application, as well as some important dates. It's really a one-of-a-kind experience, and we'd love to have your community apply. I'll be hosting an informational webinar next month, and also, of course, happy to answer any direct one-on-one questions from anyone who's considering an application this coming year. And so while we use the All America City Awards to really celebrate local civic engagement, we use this webinar series to share promising practices, ideas, tools, and programs that might help communities in their engagement endeavors and efforts. So today, we're joined by two very talented theater artists and practitioners, Aaron Landsman and Sarah Rubin, who are really going to be joining us to talk about and show us the intersection between the arts and theater and participatory democracy. So Aaron Landsman is based out of New York, and he is a playwright, performer, teacher, organizer, extraordinaire, all-around talented and creative human who will be joining us here shortly. And then, of course, Katie Rubin is based in the UK. She is a theater practitioner, and she works in partnership with local and national governments and communities to co-design public policy using participatory. And before I hand it off to their capable hands, just a few quick reminders and logistics. You'll notice that you're all muted upon entry. We will have some interactive areas around today's webinar where you'll be able to unmute. But when we are not in those processes, I ask that you stay muted just out of respect for our speakers, to cut down on that background noise. You can put any questions or difficulties you're having in the chat, and then we'll have a sort of designated Q and A part at the very end, where you'll be able to either raise your hand or put your chat, your questions in the chat. We are also recording today's webinar, so the recording slides and any resources that our speakers mentioned today will be shared out to you shortly after today's webinar or early tomorrow. And with that, I'm very excited to hand you off to Katie Rubin, who's going to get us started with a quick game. Katie?
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much, Rebecca. I'm Katie. Aaron's right there on the video too. And we're so excited to be here today, and we're excited to think about creativity with you. So Rebecca's right, because we're thinking about creativity in democracy, in participatory democracy in general, we are going to start with something a little bit participatory, so we apologize in advance. If you're up for turning on your video for just the first few minutes before we go back to the slides, that would be amazing. No, oh, there we go, beautiful. No pressure, no pressure. It's great to see you here. And I apologize if you're in an office full of serious people, because we're just going to be silly for a minute. But just before we start, we'll tell you all about these tools, and we really want to offer you some ideas. And we're really going to think today, hopefully with you, about how some of these tools can potentially be useful in your cities, in your local civic contexts. And we're going to have time for that kind of back and forth. But I hope what we are think, what we feel really passionately about is that fun and creativity are not just kind of a nice-to-have in participatory democracy, in democracy in general. They're crucial. That's our question for the next hour, let's say. Could we imagine that without creative processes, we're not necessarily going to be able to create the kind of inclusivity that we want to have, right? And welcome that we want to have into our democratic processes, and also come out with more innovative responses to entrenched challenges? And even, I would posit, fun, right? As a crucial tool to overturn power dynamics, and Zoom screens are full of power dynamics, right? Some everyone else is supposed to be muted, so let's break it up. So if you, again, if you'll just play along with me for a minute, I would love everyone, whether your video is on or off, to just move around in your screen for a minute. Have a little move, have a little dance, have a little move, 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 great, and freeze. Wherever you are, beautiful. And move, 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 move. Give it a little go, great, you're doing, you look beautiful, I love the moves, and freeze. Excellent, one more time, move, 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 and freeze. Great, you are experts at move and freeze, so now we're going to flip it. So when I say move, you freeze, and when I say freeze, you move. You got it? In fact, I won't say freeze, I'll make it harder, I'll say stop with a really mean voice, okay? So move and stop, but they're swapped around. Let's practice. Move. Oh, stop. Go ahead, give it a go, yeah, move. Move. Stop. Nice, 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 stop. Ah, trick ya! Keep stopping, great, keep stopping, keep stopping, and move. Excellent. You're all doing fabulously, you can take a breath for a second. We're going to add on one more rule. When I say head, tap your head. One hand or two, it doesn't matter, go ahead, head. When I say shoulders, tap your shoulders. Great, head. Shoulders. Okay, what do you think we're going to do with head and shoulders? Swap them. There you go, beautiful. So when I say head, you tap your shoulders. When I say shoulders, tap your head, let's give it a go. So great to see you all, including some old friends. Head. Shoulders. Shoulders. Head. All right, move. Ah, stop. Move. Move. Head. Shoulders. 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 Head. Move. Move. Stop. Stop. Hey, give yourself a round of applause, that was beautiful, excellent, 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 gorgeous, gorgeous, gorgeous. All right, so really briefly, really briefly, let's just kind of chat about that for a second. You can actually take yourself off mute, or you can put something in the chat just for a moment, just before we go back into slides. Is anybody feeling a little bit upside down? Yeah, great, great, great. Did anybody, yeah, a little bit, little bit backwards, excellent. So when we play a game like that, why, why is it a little bit upside down? Why does it feel a little bit backwards? You can put in the chat, you can telepathy to me, you can talk out loud. What's hard about it? What is that, those things, those words, move and stop? Yes. We've done that game before in Bucharest, absolutely. Contrary to expectations, absolutely, we're going against what we've always heard, and we can even have fun splitting upside down those expectations. So when we start a legislative theater process, right? We might get people thinking about what are the rules in our everyday lives? The rules, the policies, the designs that we're following even without thinking about them? And are they always working for us? Right? And do we want to reshape those rules in a way that could serve us, our human rights, right? Our civic rights better, whatever we are trying to get in the world? So you just started a process that an audience might start before doing a legislative theater process, or a community might start when they're thinking about what are those rules that we're trying to change? And if we can have a little bit of fun in the process, that's beautiful, way to go. So now, we're warmed up, we've been a little bit silly. If you've got anyone around you, we're fully embarrassed. So now I'm going to tell you a little bit more about legislative theater. I'm going to share my screen, we'll go back into formal webinar mode. So I am going to share legislative theater with you, that's my practice. Sometimes we call this process Watch, Act, Vote. It originally comes from Brazil. I'm not going to tell you that much more about it right now, because I'm actually going to show you a really short video that brings to life the process and a few of the kind of recent and very impactful, oops, examples from the rest of the world. So we're going to go on a ride here, and I hope it works.
What if every citizen could be a policymaker? In a time of rising inequalities, climate crisis, and breakdown of public trust, we need many diverse actors working together to shape the policies and laws that will make our communities more livable, equitable, and sustainable. One tool is legislative theater, which originated in the streets and council chambers of Rio de Janeiro, Brazil in the 1990s, out of the tradition of theater of the oppressed. Since then, it's taken off around the world, and momentum is growing. How does it work? Communities who are directly impacted by unjust or ineffective policies come together to play games, tell stories, and build scenes based on their shared lived experiences. In public legislative theater events, neighbors, advocates, and policymakers gather to watch the play and identify problems as they are experienced every day, building a shared understanding. Audience members are invited onstage to improvise creative solutions to the problems to test and refine their ideas together. This is a shared experience of problem solving. Finally, everyone drafts policy proposals, engaging in deliberation and debate until it's time to vote, and then decision-makers present make commitments to immediate actions. Voting is a joyous act. Everyone becomes a policymaker, working together and taking shared risks, and the traditional power dynamics are turned upside down. Over the past 30 years, legislative theater processes have led to concrete changes in cities, regions, and national contexts. In Zimbabwe, it's been used to shape climate policy. In the UK, to address gendered harassment in public spaces. In Brazil, to advance domestic workers protections. And in Austria, to develop new legislation on disability rights. And these are just a few examples out of many.
So that's legislative theater in a nutshell. Can you see the slides again? Yes?
We can, but there's something blocking just like part of the screen. It looks like, I think in the chat, it looks like there's maybe, I don't know if there's a toolbar, Katie, that is on your... There we go, we just lost part of it, yeah.
Oh, it was the, it was just the pictures of the videos, the little speakers, haha, sorry. Is that better? Can you see now?
It's better, there's still something across the top.
It's the Zoom bar.
I mean, you can see it now, and you can read the captions.
So I'll just breeze through this, because you just got a sense of what legislative theater is. So I want to bring you some kind of real-life examples. We see communities here. I'm going to tell a quick story about a process with LGBTQ youth experiencing homelessness in New York City, and how this process helped change some rules and policies through their work. But we're seeing here, right, that young people and adults experiencing all kinds of issues, this is a story about youth mental health, come together, as we saw, climate, urban planning, economic development, playing these games just like we did, telling these stories, building these scenes, and then bringing together all these stakeholders for these public sessions. And everybody warms up just like we did. Yeah, this is really key, everyone is an active participant. So what would civic participation be like if everyone was laughing and having fun? If everyone was getting a little bit confused and a little bit off their game at the beginning? That's part of my inquiry, my question. And then we're actually having this real-time testing of policy ideas, yeah? This is really, really key, that people come up onstage, test out ideas, and turn them into proposals, just like you saw in the video. And then finally, we're working together with policymakers to process, to deliberate, to amend, until we're ready for a debate, right, and a vote, and to get that joyous and collective voting, which maybe we'll have next week, but there's other times that we can vote too, right? And this is part of reminding us of all the ways we can take democratic and civic action in our lives until we get real tangible commitments from the participating policymakers, or I like to call them policy rangers, so people who have all kinds of power, different kinds of power to influence policy and decision-making. And then we're following up and following up, pushing those proposals forward until we're actually changing some real-life scenarios. Now, I can't see everyone, and I love to see people, although I see that lots of you are, there you go. So I'm just going to tell you a little story in my last minute or so, I think I have one more minute, yeah, okay. So, uh, that's the legislative theater process. It's being used, as you saw, all over the world. I'm working in the UK currently. We've helped create homelessness strategies, transport strategies, mental health strategies, really shaping lots and lots of policy that affects human beings using legislative theater. But I want to tell you really briefly about an example that happened in New York City about 10 years ago. So just to bring this to life, so there was a group of young people, LGBTQ youth, part of an organization, a community organization, and they made a play about a young woman who was experiencing a domestic, a kind of domestic dispute in her apartment. The neighbors heard some sounds, and they called the police. And this was a young trans woman. And the police came to the door, and they said, "Where's your ID?" And because they said that her ID didn't match her identity, they used that as an excuse to search her apartment and essentially criminalize her for made-up charges that had nothing to do with the support that she needed. And the audience understood that there were a lot of policy problems here in terms of police action, training, maybe, behavior. But one really clear problem was the lack of identification that accurately represents us, our name, our image, our identity, right? Because in New York State, you couldn't get a new ID unless you'd had a surgery or a doctor's note, and this wasn't accessible for everybody, certainly. So in that audience was the Chair on Immigration of the Council, who had recently proposed a new municipal ID, lots of people know it as the NYCID now. But this new proposal was in deliberation at this point. And the audience suggested that when applying for this ID, everyone should be able to write their gender marker, right? However they want to be identified, without any proof from a doctor's note, or even leave it blank. And that would be a radical shift to the traditional state IDs that were the only opportunity for anyone to interact with police, city services, et cetera, in the city until then. And that passed in the audience, and the counselor stayed and negotiated with the young people in the audience. And then, in the next few months, that became part of the bill, which became new legislation in New York City. And now, millions of people have the NYCID. And the impact of that ID expanded far beyond the original intention of just supporting undocumented immigrants, and all these more, all these additional communities could be supported. This is, to me, a really great example of an unrecognized human impact of a problem that we can identify through theater, through legislative theater, through creative methods, and that we can create a space where young people and counselors can come together, a space of trust, of shared understanding of the problem, of shared problem solving and shared risk-taking that can actually lead to concrete results. So that's what I want to leave you with on legislative theater. As we are moving over to Aaron, I want you to think for, from both of us, right? It doesn't have to be these entire processes that you're taking forward. What is a little bit, a game, an idea, a storytelling idea? What is a little bit of what we're saying that you could start to think you could implement in your space and in your place? And with that, thank you so much. Over to you.
Thanks, Katie. I have heard about, I feel like I keep growing in kind of layers of appreciation of legislative theater, and partly because it is a body of work that's been growing and transforming communities for a long time. And so there's both an established practice and room to grow within it that I think is really exciting to see as a fellow practitioner. And with all of you, I want to share a couple of kind of images and an introductory exercise, just like we did the reversal exercise with Katie, from a body of work that is much more emergent, that started as an experimental theater piece. I like to say I'm an experimental multidisciplinary artist, and that just means my what-if is bigger in terms of what a piece of art can and should do. And so Perfect City has emerged from about 12, 13 years of practice that includes participatory theater, education, design, community-engaged work with a working group on the Lower East Side of New York where I live, and is now transforming into a curriculum and a kind of toolkit for organizers, educators, and people in government and NGOs. And so I want, I'm going to ask you to do, where Katie's exercise was very like communal, and you had to turn your screens on. I'm going to say, all you need for mine is a piece of paper and something to write on, and I'm going to ask you to make a map that you may or may not share. There's no requirement to share it. This is an exercise called Avoidance Mapping. And avoidance mapping comes from a combination of inputs. One of them was, I was researching what then would become Perfect City, only understanding that I wanted to know more about how cities are planned. I've lived in cities my whole life. I was watching New York City transform into something that I wasn't crazy about, because it was becoming more and more exclusive economically and in terms of policy and in terms of design. So I just started looking around to find out who could help, and I found an urban planner named Delann Chan, she grew up on the Lower East Side. And one of the things she said that stuck with me when I was studying with her, she teaches at Stanford, was, "City kids are urban planners from day one." City kids ride the public transit system before they're born. They understand invisible boundaries where they're invited and welcome and where they're not, without anyone having to tell them, and they are experts at that. And they don't go into the field, they don't go into architecture, urban planning, and urban design. The people that go into those fields are predominantly white men from the suburbs. And those white men from the suburbs tend to have a series of aesthetics, like a set of aesthetics, that translate into certain kinds of urban policy and certain kinds of urban design. And those results have impacts on the communities that already live in a city. So that was super interesting to me. I took that with me when I started this working group at a place called Abrams Art Center. And in our first couple of weeks of working with a group of paid participants who were New York City residents aged 18 to 24, I sort of casually said, "What are you all experts at in the city?" And we went around and talked about what we knew about the city. And one young man named Jamel Ayala said, "Well, I'm an expert at not running into people I don't want to run into." And we all laughed. And then my colleague Mallory Catlett, who I'd worked with a lot, said, "Can you draw a map of that?" And so Jamel drew this powerful map of just trying to get from his house on Avenue B in New York across a one-block park called Tompkins Square Park to his friend's house around Avenue A. And he said, "Oh, if I go by the handball court, someone will run into these people, and that's going to be awkward. So maybe I'll go around the dog run, and then if I do that, as long as so-and-so is not walking their dog, that won't be awkward." And it was very clear that he was talking about a whole lot of small interactions and large interactions that had to do with his past and his present and his possible future that had consequences for him. And so we all laughed, and we all enjoyed it. And then we all decided to make our own avoidance maps. So what I would like for you to do is very quickly, just take, and I'm going to share my screen with the guidelines once I explain them, very quickly, grab a piece of paper, and make your own avoidance map. So what that means is, you're going to think of a time, or a place, or a situation where you feel, I'm going to move my toolbar around, uncomfortable, awkward, or unsafe. It could take place in the past or present. It could take place traveling, it could be indoors or out. It could be a specific building and room, or it could be a whole metropolitan area, or anything else. And you're going to think about that place, and then draw a map of your route from one place, from point A to point B, and marking out where the avoidances are. That is it. So I would love for you to take literally like three or four minutes. Trust that artistic talent, visual rendering skills are something that we all carry inside of us. And just so you know, we can all read maps before we can read words. That's something that people have studied. So we are all cartographers and all readers of maps. So I would love for you to take two minutes, draw your avoidance map, and then we'll discuss in a second. Okay, I feel like a test proctor right now, but please put your pets down. And we're going to talk a little bit about how this work translates over a longer period of time. So one of the things that we noticed when we started doing avoidance mapping workshops, when we invited a diverse group of people into the room, was that everyone's map of the same place can look very different depending on where we stand in terms of demographics, identity, privilege, et cetera, income, to race and gender, to any of the other markers that we can imagine. And one of the things that is very powerful as a next step is to talk together, if we have, you know, a full session, we would talk together about where policy intersects with your avoidances, right? Does it have to do with transit? Do you avoid certain bus routes? Do you avoid certain tunnels? Do you avoid certain stairways? Does it have to do with disability rights? Does it have to do with climate change? Does it have to do with zoning and housing? And where are the policy intersections with your avoidance map? And part of the reason to do that is that it tends to put people on equal footing. If it's your first time at a community event where we're trying to source information about how we want to plan a neighborhood, you realize very quickly, when you can identify the policy intersections, that you have a lot of understanding of where you live, or where you work, or where you travel. And so no one necessarily is or isn't a greater expert, no matter what credentials they come with. So a lot of Perfect Cities work is always underpinned by the idea that the knowledge exists in the room, and sometimes it's helpful to have a group of people or a facilitator sort of point that out. The next step also with avoidance mapping might be, what would your map look like if the avoidance wasn't necessary because of changes to those policies we identified, right? So the next step might be to do a belonging map. We might say, oh, the offset of avoidance is belonging. And we've done this work with a lot of different groups of people, domestic violence survivors, shelter residents, young kids from age six grade on up, as well as, you know, representatives from the Architectural League of New York, who were in fact urban planners and designers, as well as educators. And so avoidance mapping is an example of a tool, just like Katie was talking about, that is very easy to integrate into the early stages of a community planning process. And then you can kind of go on your way, having leveled the field a little bit in terms of getting people to feel like their knowledge is important as well. I'm going to spend just three or four minutes talking very quickly through this body of work and where it came from, because it came from somewhere sort of surprisingly different. Perfect City started, actually as a theater piece, oh, when I better change this too. It started as a theater piece, literally called City Council Meeting. So a bunch of years ago, I got dragged to a local government meeting in a city where I did not live, and I expected it to be only agonizingly boring. About 20 minutes in, an older gentleman in a beige suit, who you can see on your right, his name was Pete Colt, he got up, and he dumped a bag of trash in front of the council, and he had collected that trash in playgrounds across the city. And he said, "What are you all going to do to clean the city up?" A council member then stood up and said, "Well, you just created a public health hazard, we have to clear the room." And Pete Colt said, without missing a beat, "You just made my point better than I ever could have." I realized that I was watching some pretty amazing theater, and I started visiting council meetings and looking for the theatrical moments everywhere I traveled, as an actor, as a playwright, as a teacher. The photo on the left is actually from a very powerful farewell message from Bismarck, North Dakota. From there, I began working with Mallory Catlett, who's an incredible director, and we collected transcripts, worked with community groups, and built a version of a theater piece, literally called City Council Meeting, in five US cities: New York City, Houston, Texas, Tempe, Arizona, Keene, New Hampshire, and San Francisco, California. And the piece was this: Audience members performed transcripts from local government meetings, playing various roles, and then part- And then part two was. Local political adversaries gathered with us in the safe space of art to make something that addressed their shared challenge. It wasn't necessarily about problem solving, but it was actually just about what could art do? That policymaking or activism on its own might not be able to do. So that piece ran in several cities. And while we were really thinking of it at first as an experimental art prank, a couple of cool things happened. Asada Richards in Houston and Marcelino Quinones in Tempe ran for public office as a result of being part of the work. Even more interesting was Marcelino became a state legislator in Arizona. He's now running for. An open at-large council seat in Phoenix. And is this, he's got the backing of the mayor and it's likely he's going to, you know, a week from now. Be one of the things we hopefully celebrate after the election. Asada Richards did not win her council seat, but the visibility she gained from participating in the election and running. Allowed her to start a small business incubator for black women in Houston's historically black third ward. And that was a way to stave off some of the rampant gentrification and overdevelopment that was happening in her neighborhood. So even not winning, that was an eye opener for me, allowed real progress to happen. From there, we, Mallory and I wrote the book, The City We Make Together, detailing our process. And I began teaching a freshman seminar here at Princeton where I work part-time. Literally called as Politics of Performance. From there, I developed a toolkit with an amazing scholar and artist named Ebony Noel Golden. And that was basically to impart. The kinds of empowering techniques that performance can offer on its own to young people. So today, the curriculum that we built, which is called School for Participation, is starting. It's a seven-week residency in Trenton at a place called Homeworks Trenton. I'm also doing ongoing work with Bard College and the Hudson Civic Forum in upstate New York. Which is a way of kind of looking at the, a purple district and a rural district. And then have been doing various kinds of introductions to this work with the National Civic League. So I'm gonna stop there and just say that the, just by way of finishing, we'll say that the goal long term for this work. Is that we harness something that's being used in the environmental movement called Impact Networks. Where we allow different cities and different organizations in cities. To collaborate with each other without becoming a sort of centralized top-heavy nonprofit. So the goal will be that there will be Perfect City chapters in many, many cities. And that they can offer each other assistance when, you know, climate resilience is an issue, transit is an issue. And that it will be running, you know, without us necessarily having to be everywhere at once. I'm going to stop there. And Katie, can I pass it back to you to offer them the breakout prompt?
Sure. That was awesome, Aaron. So we want to now turn it to you for about seven or eight minutes. In a cup, in some breakout rooms. And the question is. Can you think, how could you be inspired by any of the tools we've offered or bits of the tools we've offered? To. Integrate some creativity, fun, playfulness into your upcoming civic challenges. So think about maybe in your group, one or two local challenges you're having. How could you imagine designing a participatory process that might integrate? Some bits of these processes for the purposes of. Inclusivity, equity, innovative results, welcoming environments, accessibility, all those things we've been talking about. Highlighting the inherent theatricality within democracy and local democracy, all of that, right? So in your groups, what might you design from one of these tools into one of your local challenges? When you come back, we'll ask a few groups to share, share if you have a couple of ideas. Does that sound good? So we're going to put you into breakout groups and we'd love to hear your creative designs in a few minutes. And then we'll have time for questions.
Welcome back.
You made great plans. Okay.
So we were thinking. Given, given that we just have a few minutes and we want to make sure we leave some time for questions. Is there a group that would be willing to be brave and just share out either like one thing that tangible that came from your conversation? Or even more specifically, a way you might integrate this or something like this into policy or organizing plans? Go ahead, Jonathan.
You know, just really quickly on my part, I have a theater course in a local prison. Youth offender facility and. I've been doing playback theater, but I'm now, I want to do forum slash legislative theater with them. And in the spring, and I'm just wondering about how to make that really impactful. So. Might, might be knocking on your door and asking some questions, but. And I was with Karen, who's going to do some interesting post-election work. I don't know if she wants to say anything.
That's all right.
Oh, Katie, you're muted.
I was going to say, we'll chase you up Karen to find out what that is.
I know.
But that's great, Jonathan, and we'll, I'll hold that question about kind of resources and, and kind of impacts and things. But I love the way you're thinking about how do you take what you're already doing and move it into a policymaking space? That's brilliant, brilliant, brilliant. Yeah. Anybody else want to share what your group was thinking about? Any ideas, brainstorming? One more report out.
My, I didn't ultimately end up in a group that was talking, but something I was thinking about is I do a lot of organizing on the east side of Seattle, which is home to a lot of major tech companies. So Microsoft, Amazon, tons and tons of tech employees at every level out here. And without generalizing, we have a lot of engineers here and we have a lot of neurodivergent people who live here. And I've actually been asked a number of times, like, what is a good way to engage people who are neurodivergent? Might not feel, you know, necessarily comfortable speaking in front of a crowd or participating in a way that we might think of as. You know, the normal way we run meetings. And I could imagine this being potentially really freeing to people who might think of themselves that way.
Hmm, nice.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Yeah. Yeah, I love that. And like thinking about kind of different kinds of storytelling, different ways of being in front of a crowd, but also as Aaron brought in mapping, like different ways of kind of design. That we can all do very quickly, right? And, and that don't have to necessarily put us in the spot, but can still think about all of us as creators.
Yeah, and I think especially thinking about groups of strangers, there's a way in which like, if I can make some mark on a piece of paper and then describe it. It's different than me having to tell my whole story and be kind of like present and performative. Especially when there will be such a range of people whose comfort, you know, range of comfort levels within any group. Nice.
Absolutely. I love the examples coming up in the chat. And maybe as we think about, feel free to keep popping in more examples and we'll just shift into kind of questions and sharing for our last 10 minutes. And just to echo Sylvia to start by kind of responding to Jonathan's question briefly. Sylvia and I both work with People Powered, among other things that we do. So People Power, and Aaron is also a member of People Powered. And there's a, a lead, a tool, a digital playbook. So an online free playbook in four languages at least now. On Legislative Theater, as well as Citizens Assemblies, participatory budgeting, participatory policymaking, and digital platforms for participatory democracy. But of course, I'm partial to the Legislative Theater one, and yes, an awesome new example of Legislative Theater in Brazil. And how it's integrating with Citizens Assemblies, which is really, really exciting. And I think, you know, we can throw in there that kind of. At People Powered, we're really thinking about, or all of us in participatory democracy these days are thinking about an ecosystem of participatory democracy. And that it doesn't have to be one or the other tool, right? That these things can really support each other and go together. So we'll share some resources at the end, but Jonathan, there's a lot of resources on People Powered. And a new website that you'll get called thepeopleact.org specifically on how to do Legislative Theater, step by step, kind of. Questions, things to prompt your, your planning and thinking.
Great.
Awesome. Should we get any other questions, either in the chat or out loud?
I have a question regarding, if you could share a little bit more about how they're integrating this into citizens assemblies.
Sure. Sylvia, do you want to say something about how that project worked?
Hi, yes, we are, thank you. We are doing this right now. Our plan is that we have finished Climate Assembly in Bujuru. It's a city in the Amazon, two hours from Berlin. And they had these recommendations to create a bioeconomy. And a family agriculture plan in the city. And we want to organize with them Legislative Theater with public schools. To advance on these recommendations to become policymaking this year. So we are starting organizing and talking with them about that because we think that. Their recommendations are very good, but I think. We need more work together as Mandy has talked in our group. A lot of work together to make this come true.
Nice. And one of the things that, as a, as a kind of similar or complementary track that we're doing with Perfect City is in upstate New York. We're, you know, they're, they're very affected by climate change and in the Hudson Valley. And so been working with some students to find the meetings in small towns where they're talking about climate change. Often masked by something seemingly mundane like drainage. And then there really, there are a lot of meetings where people are kind of now being able to articulate. How these seemingly mundane bureaucratic policies intersect with something much larger. And then they're looking for ways to kind of move things forward without having to be mired in the bureaucratic only, even though that's important. And so the end result is, over the course of a week. We'll compile a lot of transcripts like we did for our show, make a short performance that the community, that the working group invites a community into. And then we kind of fashion a local ending based on like what alternative ways of expressing these needs or expressing these plans for the future could be. So it's a very different look, but a very similar goal to Legislative Theater. In, in a lot of ways.
You all give advice to, you know, maybe a, you know, a city or a community entity that. Is sort of looking to dip their toe into this and isn't particularly well-resourced to do like a big scale. Full production, but what is like a really low hanging fruit, easy entry type of thing that, that an entity can get involved in?
Sure. I think there's lots of ways. I mean. Good to see you. We're, we're waving folks other creative practices off. There's lots of ways. That you can get started. First of all, kind of, I would say Legislative Theater and Perfect City, City Council Meeting are. Often much less expensive than a Citizens Assembly, first of all, right? In terms of cost, but also kind of, we will do Legislative Theater processes, a really short one. Even internally or for a small group or for a day or two. That can kind of be like, let's bring all the key stakeholders together, tell the stories, make the scenes. Get the ideas out there, negotiate them, right? You don't have to have a big public event. You don't necessarily have to have weeks and weeks of work to get to a result of some creative ideas and some deliberation. So there can be like a quick and dirty process, right? There can be a kind of, you know, workshops that just get people thinking about creative ideas. And just to go back to the, and then I'll pass it to Aaron, but just to go back to the how to integrate Legislative Theater or any kind of theatrical creative tool into Citizens Assemblies like. Or participatory budgeting. There's a whole phase of participatory democracy around problem identification. That can really, really strongly be done with these tools, right? Citizens Assemblies sort of start from the idea generation and PB also. But where does the community get to come in? And, and really identify and frame the, how they're experiencing a problem or what is missing in their community? And then at the end, kind of as Sylvia is saying, there's a lot of advocacy that can be done. About the ideas and a lot of kind of creating a space for really nitty gritty deliberation with lots and lots of people. And theatrical tools can be really helpful for that. So those are just some things to say. It doesn't have to be a whole theatrical process. It can be a little bit into some. Policymaking process that those folks are already using. What do you think, Aaron?
Yeah, similar, I mean, to. An hour-long avoidance mapping workshop is a component of like a two-part process that can be just at the beginning of. A design process that can, can be more inclusive. So a big thing that we look at in Perfect City and that I look at, whether I'm making theater for theater's sake or I'm doing something that's more participatory as part of. Policy or organizing is like, who's in the room and who's not in the room? Who do you want in the room? And then how are, what are the strategies to make? The people most affected by policy, which Katie's also really great at bringing into a process, welcome in a space. So I can imagine a very kind of like load, you know, easy. Introductory thing where it's like, there's a meeting and it could happen remotely or in person. Where it's like, okay, what rooms are you having your policymaking conversations in? Are they rooms where everyone feels welcome? Is your city hall above a police station? Do the communities you want to talk about policing with have an, an existing generations-long experience of policing? That will make them less inclined to go or to feel like they can speak their minds? So that's one example. So then we could say, oh, where would be a more welcoming space? And then we could say, what is the one thing we could do if we had a day together or an hour together? That would make everyone feel equally welcomed into that new space? With the confidence that their knowledge is going to be valued and visible. And so that's where mapping comes in. I see a question in the chat. I know we're low on time, but solution identification, Georgia, that is. You know, what we would call belonging mapping. So you make, you remake a map at the end of a process. That says, what would the, what would your city look like if it didn't have this obstacle in your way?
We.
If you want to also just verbalize the answer that you gave to that question as well.
Sure, sure. So as I was sharing, well, just before we wrap up. You know, we, I think that, that, that. By solution prioritization, solution generation and prioritization and action commitments are key, right? And these kind of creative processes create an environment where we're at, we can actually ask. Policymakers and decision makers to make commitments right there. So in that sense, we need to do that deliberation, that voting to prioritize. Right? So that we can get what are the next steps that are going to happen. And we have. Time-bound processes for feeding back to everyone who participated in a Legislative Theater process so that we can find out and track. The commitments, the proposals and the commitments that came out of a process. And in that way, we've, you know, these processes have fed into policy platforms. Around, as we said, in New York City, but also all around the UK. We should probably wrap up and we'll, we'll let Rebecca wrap up, but we just wanted to say, we're happy to share resources with you and also. There's a, a launch event for some new case studies and videos on Legislative Theater, that video that you saw. And for others are brand new resources articulating some of the policy wins from different countries. So that's on Friday at 2:00 PM GMT, 10:00 AM Eastern Time. And we'll share that with you. Aaron, anything else you want to say at the end?
No, just look for, thank you all so much for jumping in with questions and trying this and we'll look, look for us. Rolling out a, a, a new web portal for this work in the spring.
And we're here for you.
Yeah, really.
And if we, Katie and Aaron, if I can get those resources from you all, I'll share those with all of you in our follow-up email, which will include this recording as well as the slides. Thank you all so much for spending an hour of your day with us here today. And a special thank you to Katie and Aaron for sharing their expertise and time with us as well.
Awesome.
Bye, everybody.
Take care of y'all. Thanks so much.